This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:41 PM Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 in Room 137 of the Addison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Mr. Slusner?
Here.
Chair Seeling?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Mr. Munoz, would you like to introduce the students for the pledge?
Yes, tonight we have the honor of the pledge to be led by John Adams Student Council members.
Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your picture's taken. 2.01 approval of the agenda, Superintendent.
There are no changes.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Three, announcements and communications. Whoops, sorry. In the absence of School Board Clerk Director Nathan, I'm appointing Director Barlow as interim School Board Clerk for this meeting. Announcements and communications, 3.01, recognitions. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, we're going to start off with recognizing the ALC art program. So if you want to come forward and tell us all about this great sculpture that you have there.
Well, my name's Alexis Zacharell. I'm the art teacher at the ALC, and we were fortunate enough during our first quarter to have an artist in residence. And her name is Mary Beth Majar, and she's a local sculptor, so she'll be coming and speaking to you.
Hello. Hello, thank you for having us. So, and this is Jalen. Oop, there we go. A little closer or further? Anyway, what we did, I've worked with Ms. Zacharell in the last year or so, and she and Nicole, I believe the social worker at ALC, wrote a grant through the Minnesota State Arts Board, which we thank them for their support, and they were able to pay me to buy supplies in my time, and I had the students transported to my studio. And none of them had any experience. Corinna had a little bit of experience, she's sitting back there, working with metal, but I have a metal bender. I taught them how to cut it. We worked on welding it. And then the youth build through ALC made the pedestals. And we were able to show them at Skyway, they came to my studio three times? Two times, three times? Yeah. So we had a lot of fun, learned a lot, and I think that Jalen, she can tell you about her experience. Do you want to talk about yours?
Yeah. So, learning how to weld was amazing. It was a career I never thought I would even explore, and it made me look forward to going to school, and I usually don't. And if I had opportunities like this, I would always be excited to go to school. And learning from Mary Beth was a great experience. She's a great teacher. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. So, I guess for me too, art, and especially as a sculptor myself, and, you know, so much of the art opportunities aren't focused on three-dimensional work. It's such a different way of thinking, and it's much more physical, and not exactly every art teacher can have, you know, saws and all the things that I use. So it was a nice opportunity, and I remember you and Kylie, they worked together on one particular sculpture, and at one point, they're both sitting on the floor and just, this is hard. And just to have that, because there's so many times as an artist, and I talk to them about composition and minimalism, that it's easy to look at something and think, and then you actually do it. So to understand that appreciation, understand the technical side of it, just to be able to explore and create something without a lot of parameters, which is really exciting. So we had a lot of fun. So, I think they're going to come back in the spring just for a fun day, just to goof off, and we're going to make something big. So, anyway.
Jalen, which did you work on?
I worked on the first one right there.
Okay.
And then this one.
Do you want to say anything else about what you worked on, about your, do you have an artist statement or something about?
Yeah. That one, it was just me and my friend Kylie playing around with stuff and learning how to use the bender and welding it together. And then that one, I was inspired by, like, you know what the doctors have, it's the little kids' toys? I was inspired by that because it actually moves. Yeah.
And then we also have two other students that made creative work. They wanted to be present, which is amazing, but they didn't want to talk about their work, which is a skill in and of itself that we work on. I'm still not entirely comfortable and sure about talking about my own work, so it takes practice, so.
So, any chances we can display those in our cases back there for a while? Or, I think those pictures have been there for a little while, so we could change those out and put them in our case?
I think we can talk about it, although I do, there was one request to take one home, the heart sculpture.
Oh, okay.
Dylan's giving it to his mother, which I thought was very sweet. I know, he needs credit for that, because it's a really nice thing to do. As a mom, right? So, anyway. So, yeah, we had a really, but I have to give Ms. Zacharell credit. She's super open to new ideas and thinking about new ways of working with her students, and I really appreciate that. And, you know, having faith in me, and, you know, I have lots of things that can cut fingers and burn fingers, and we all had a really good time, and it was really, you know, very fruitful, so.
Yeah. Well, we were pleased to be invited to your opening reception, and we did get to hear Dylan speak on behalf of his art, so he is honing his skills, and maybe another time he'll come before us in a public way. So we appreciate you and the students as well. It really was a moving experience. I'd like to, my colleagues may have some questions or comments as well.
Just as Ms. Seeling said, when you students talked to us about what inspired you to create what you did, and then what you learned along the way, that sometimes you found the meaning in what you had created without knowing what it was to begin with. You're artists. I mean, these are wonderful, and as beautiful as they are, your stories were really inspirational. So thank you for this, and keep creating. This is amazing.
We're not done. So, anyway.
And I appreciate your comment regarding how because of this project, it allowed you to become more engaged and involved. And if you have the opportunity to encourage other students, because some students are having a difficult time trying to find something to connect and get excited over, what could you perhaps offer to them as a suggestion or a way?
I don't know.
Well, something?
Okay.
But art is important. I think we have learned to understand the importance and value of that, and so to the teacher and to the artist in residence, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Workman?
Yeah. I really enjoyed coming and seeing all these works of art exhibited, and it was like, that rocking chair is amazing, because it moves. But I'd also like to let people know that there was a different project for the second quarter of the year involving dolls, and I hope that people who worked on that would come present for us. And I hope you have something really exciting planned for the quarter that you're now in.
I worked on that project, too.
Did you?
Yeah, I didn't make the dolls, but I made the Frankenstuffy's, which was like, we took apart different stuffed animals and put them together in ways that would look different.
So, third quarter is Bobby Marina's. He just came and spoke yesterday, actually. And his artwork is based on concepts, so students are going to come up with, have a story that they want to tell, and then they're going to use found objects and pretty much anything at their disposal to create an installation. And the installations will be put around the city.
Ah.
So, I'm kind of curious. And then last, fourth quarter, Chris Rackley, he has an exhibit right now at the Art Center. He was one of the...
Artists on the Verge, they work with technology.
So he's going to be using green screen and videography with the students. So it's been an awesome year for the arts in our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to our audience members, we do have a fairly shortish meeting tonight, so if you are still here at the end of the meeting, please come and take a look at these amazing sculptures by the students. This is really remarkable to have these in our boardroom, to really represent some of the amazing stuff that's going on, so thank you.
Okay, National School Counsel...
Are you still recognizing?
Yes. National School Counseling Week is celebrated February 3rd through the 7th to focus attention on unique contributions of school counselors. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve success and plan for careers. School counselors work with all students to remove barriers to learning by addressing students' academic concerns, post-secondary options, and socio-emotional skills. Our district has invested in the work of our school counselors by adding 13 positions for this school year to make a total of 42 counselors, serving our students and families from kindergarten through 12th grade. They play a critical role in supporting our district's work around socio-emotional learning initiatives. School counseling programs provide much-needed resources for students, parents, teachers, administrators, and families. So we want to thank all of our school counselors, as we honor them this week.
3.02, school highlights. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, at this time Denise Moody, Assistant Director of Student Services, is going to talk to us about LEAP program.
Thank you for having me back and providing another opportunity to share something else that we have been working on over the last year. I have with me Samuel Theis, the teacher at the Launching Emerging Adults Program. So I again have a short video to show you, but just to set that up, the Launching Emerging Adults Program is a special education setting for program that serves transition age youth, ages 16 to 21. It's a partnership in collaboration with Fernbrook Family Center, and was really built on the new creative way to meet our students' needs. I'm going to have Samuel talk a little bit about students innovation.
Yeah, right now we serve six students, and we actually just had the honor of graduating our first two students in the program. That happened two weeks ago, which was a big moment for us, our first real tangible success. But right now we're serving six students. Five of them are going to graduate in May, June, hopefully. One of them will graduate next year. We're in the process of recruiting, orienting three new students, two. And all of that, we operate in a community building called the Exchange, which is run by a pastor and his wife. That was also a conscious choice, we didn't want to be housed in a typical school building. Most of our students have pretty negative connotations with school buildings throughout their experiences in their school career. And that way, we also have a tie-in immediately, connection with the community, opportunity for them to volunteer through the community center and just kind of connect them with the community again. So as Denise already told, I'm a .5 special ed teacher for the program. We have a full-time program coordinator, and we also work together with two mental health professionals who are also both their .5, and that's in collaboration through Fernbrook.
So I'm going to set up the video to show you. Fantastic. LEAP was an idea that was born out of a collaboration that we knew there was a group of students that we were not serving well. We wanted to figure out some students that we were losing. They were falling through the cracks, they were dropping out, they weren't responding to the programming that was available, and we wanted to figure out a different way to serve them.
We run a very innovative transition program for youth between 16 and 21 years old who has been struggling throughout their high school career, and we try to offer them a new way to get their high school diploma in a very alternative approach.
They tell us really what they need, and then their programming is based on what they tell us. So every LEAP student really experiences the LEAP program differently based on their needs.
In our IEP process, I really involve a student into making the goals. I sit down with the students a couple of times, even before the initial IEP meeting, to really set out their IEP goals based on our conversations, based on the RENEW mapping tool.
RENEW is a series of maps to begin with, and they're different, each map has a different topic, and it's a visual. So with our program coordinator and our special education teacher, one of them will meet with students, and it's seven or eight maps that they'll complete, different topics for each map. So one might be hopes and dreams, one might be about goals, one is about barriers, one is about the people that are important in their life. So there's various topics.
It's impacted me at home, been a very positive motivator and everything to become independent, and kind of, it's been a very big confidence booster, and it's helped me make more friends.
I feel more motivated to wake up in the morning because I know today I'm going to go to LEAP and see my friends. It's a place where we're all united, where we're a community, where we can help the community.
I feel I can be myself here, and I feel that I don't get judged, because when I walk into a public school, it's different, and I don't feel like I belong.
I think the fundamental belief is that, I think that there's a place for everybody, and there's a sense of belonging here. I think that people need to know that there's a place that they can call like a comfort safe spot, and I think LEAP is that.
LEAP was created in a community setting because we didn't want this program to feel like a regular school building.
We've really stressed the importance of collaboration in both building and maintaining this program and supporting our participants.
That collaborative piece of working together and having people that are struggling find worth and value is really an empowering piece that we were excited about. I don't know that I've ever seen a program that is structured this way, but I don't think I've ever seen a program be this effective at affecting change in some of the most struggling students or youth in the community.
It was a nice pairing of philosophies, that the Exchange itself kind of has the philosophy of everyone belongs, and that's part of what LEAP is trying to create, too.
I can judge how LEAP is effective because I notice a lot of the students are actually coming every day, whereas in a mainstream school, the attendance was very poor and very low.
The meals at LEAP are very important because that's really when the participants come together, and everybody seems to kind of take on a different role. And it's like a big family in a kitchen, making a big meal. And sometimes not everybody gets along, but somehow it always works, the meals always turn out well, and then everybody always sits down together to have a meal together.
I feel like when I come in here, I have a clean slate, like, there's nothing to worry about, like, I'm safe.
Here at LEAP, we don't have nobody to look at as different. Like, I feel like the, I don't know, like, the community and the adults around here, they even show that more like, we're all the same. So that's why I really like LEAP. I don't feel like I'm an outcast or something different.
Slowly through the staff, and especially through the participants, you get to see, like, what we're doing is really important.
I mean, one day he said, it was the day we took him canoeing, in a very hushed, standing right beside me conversation, he said, you know, "Thanks for doing something with me that you would do with your family." You know, and those feelings are like, man, you didn't get to do these things, you know? So there certainly is feeling in seeing them be successful.
Launching Emerging Adults Program is a creative way to address the needs and serve a group of students that haven't been served well in our traditional school environment. We believe that through strong relationships and a focus on community integration, that participants can be successful as they launch into adulthood.
We're really proud of the work that we've done in building this program. The staff have done just an amazing job taking an idea and really bringing it to life. It's been fun to see participants that, we didn't really go into it thinking about serving students that had dropped out, but that was kind of the students that found us, was students that, the program's located right next to Gage East, and so there was some students that were living in the housing that's designed for youth that had housing instability. And they kind of found us and found like, okay, is this a way that I can get my diploma? And so, one of our students that just graduated was actually 22, but still eligible for services, because this was his last year, and we were really excited about being able to provide an opportunity where we can re-engage students and provide a way for them to reach their high school diploma, and really build some of those skills that they need as they go into adulthood.
Comments or questions, board members? Director Amundson?
I'm very happy that we're, I mean, I know we can't serve every student, but if every innovative program like this, it catches more of the ones that have fallen through the cracks, and every single student is important, so I love that you've found a way to address their needs.
Director Workman?
I would echo what Director Amundson said, and also I think this just shows the importance of those relationships between students and the adults in their life, especially in a school setting. And obviously, it's a very small setting, which makes it easier for everybody, I think. I think it would. And I'm thinking that as we're moving forward, we really need to look at, how do we deliver education, and what are we delivering, and how can we help students so that they can then be ready to learn? Because there are sometimes, as you know, so many barriers to overcome. And the young man who, all of them who spoke, it was just, yeah. They're a pretty neat group of students.
Director Barlow?
Two quick questions. First of all, excellent program, and this is part of the SEL in action. Is the RENEW mapping program a tool specific for usage in LEAP, or is it being utilized outside of the parameters of LEAP?
We so far are only using it within LEAP. So it is a person-centered planning tool that we receive training on from the University of New Hampshire Institute on Disability. So the program in kind of its model is meant to be implemented within, it's designed to be implemented in a mainstream school. We adapted that to really be with all of our students within LEAP, but we have not yet pushed that out to some of our other schools, though it's a model that could be.
And I had the honor to be trained recently at the RENEW mapping tool, and, I mean, mostly looking at like RPbis pyramids, they kind of work with the third level on top, third area, and I think our students are maybe even more like the top of that, top of the pyramid. So I think classically they work indeed more within a general education setting, and we kind of try to be creative and use their program also within our setting.
And then finally, capacity, what is the maximum capacity at this point that LEAP is able to accommodate?
We're still trying to figure that out. I think that, you know, we want it to be kind of students being at different level of needs. We've said we've been at a cap of about eight to 10. So far, we haven't got to the point where we've had to turn anybody away. There is a process that students go through, they need to apply and want to be there, and so, so far, capacity hasn't been an issue, but we would anticipate that probably about 10 would be the capacity.
Thank you.
Anything else, board members?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to visit the program not too long ago and interact with the students and get a tour, and, you know, I think it's a great fit for those students, but I think two things. One is we have the right person directing it, organizing it. The other is, these kind of programs, you have to have the right teachers and staff working with students, and it's a perfect fit. I had an opportunity to meet, I think, all but one of the people working there, and so, thank you for taking on this program, and it truly is making a difference in kids' lives, we heard that on the video, but even when I was there in person and talking to the students, you can tell it was really making a difference in their lives. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. 3.03, Rochester Public School Foundation Grant?
Yes, I'm going to call Jenny up, and she's going to announce our Rochester Public School Foundation grant.
So yes, I'm Jenny Amundson, and I'm president of the Rochester Public School Foundation. RPSF is a nonprofit community foundation that connects the community and our schools to advance and inspire educational opportunities for all students. One of our main activities is awarding grants to support innovative enhancements to curriculum that may not otherwise occur due to limited resources. Since 1988, over $550,000 has been awarded in grants. Funding for these grants come from personal and business donations, including the school district payroll deductions, Boo Fest, our big fundraiser, but other fundraisers, and established memorial funds. Some of our funds include the Mike Laddan Fund, which was established in 1994 to create, to fund creative educational excellence through innovative participation and education quality in Rochester Public Schools, while providing assistance for students who may not otherwise be able to participate. And the Jacqueline Goodyear Fund, established in 1988 to support fine arts projects and opportunities in the public schools, which are not traditionally part of the curriculum. We also have received a donation from IBM this year for a STEM grant, and we also have an Athletics and Fine Arts Award. Part of when people receive their grant, there are follow-up requirements. They need to submit a project summary with photos whenever possible, they need to share the outcomes at a team or staff meeting, and there may be opportunities to share project outcomes with media in partnership with the district's communication department. I would like to share two past winners tonight, just to show you some of the, it's amazing what some of these projects really are. I picked one from our last grant cycle and one from a previous grant cycle. So from our last grant cycle, Allison Haas, who actually will be recognized later tonight, she is a teacher at John Adams, and she received a grant for Sphero robots to be used at John Adams. She says that without, so she, when she taught before, there was a gap before they would be able to do it. And so the eighth graders in Project Lead the Way were able to code their robot to move through a maze, and some groups even added sound and code to, color to their code. And the eighth graders absolutely loved getting the opportunity to use them this quarter, and she cannot wait to use them again next quarter. And the coding skills they have gained really helped then when they moved on to the next part. And so she said it was so wonderful to be able to know that her students gain the coding skills before they leave, which she didn't feel that way in the past. And the other one is from Jennifer Brungur, who's a library media specialist, and she purchased authentic items to teach students the importance of natural resources to indigenous peoples of Minnesota. And all those items were put in a trunk that could be then moved to different schools. And they teach about life ways with the Ojibwe and Dakota peoples in Minnesota. So it was used to enrich the second grade social studies curriculum by giving students a hands-on experience of objects that were actually handmade in Minnesota by Native Americans. And so there's an experience that you can't get by just, you know, books or photos or videos. And with sharing it, it was exciting to her that there were a number of students, both Native American and non-Native students, who did have personal connections with these. And so it was really fun for them to be able to share with their fellow students, and conversations were lively with that. Native American students felt validated and affirmed by the trunk lessons. Many students were proud to share their knowledge and personal stories. So the unit was enriched with authentic items, and she was also able then to purchase books that will be in the trunk, that were written for children by Native American authors, and she also added books to their public library. And what I think is really important, too, is that this will, the project will continue into the 2019, 2020 school year and beyond, and she is working with the curriculum instruction department to do that. And that is one of the things that we really feel is important with these, that we really hope that, you know, they're innovative, they're something we can fund, but there will be things that then will be able to be part of the curriculum. So with that said, I'm excited to introduce our winners for this year. So if you would like to come up. So we had... So we had three winners this year. And we had, this is our winter, fall winter of the 2019 grant cycle. And the first grant recipient was not able to come tonight. It's from John Marshall High School. And we were awarded $2,500 to a special abilities project, it was called. This project partners John Marshall Special Education students and John Marshall Band students with a Minnesota-based composer to create a new work for band and percussion ensemble. While creating the work, special needs students would be able to participate in meaningful music education, exploring the elements of melody, rhythm, and performance, while current band students would serve as coaches and mentors. All students actively participate in the creation of the new work in collaboration with a composer from Minnesota, helping to determine nearly every element of the piece. The piece will be presented in several community performances with the hope that a seed can be planted from which additional projects, ensembles, music classes, and special events can grow. The next one is from Matt Cage, is here from Willow Creek. And do you want to talk about yours?
My name is Matt Cage. I teach Project Lead the Way at Willow Creek. So I teach energy and environment, sixth graders, design and modeling to seventh graders, and robotics to eighth graders. And the grant that I wrote was for a 3D printer. And the program that I want to do is called Widgets. So in design and modeling, the kids need to go through the whole steps of the design and modeling process. And we do use a lot of reused pieces. We use craft sticks and all that. But sometimes it's just really nice for the kids to be able to go all the way from the start to finish and produce a quality, professional work. So that's where the 3D printer comes in. Then I also have kids that, in order to use a 3D printer, they need to learn a CAD program. The one CAD program that I teach is called Autodesk, which is a professional CAD program. And then I take them so far, and then that's all much time I have. So I'm also planning and doing an after-school program where they can expand their CAD skills. One of the things that I thought was the most interesting about this is I was explaining to them, my son is a senior at University of North Dakota in engineering, and he was talking about how some of his friends are just getting jobs, and their job is to go out and CAD and do rapid prototyping, which is 3D printing. So I was talking to students about that. Then after class, one of them said, "So, Mr. Cage, you saying you get to get paid for this?" I said, "Yes, you do." "No, really, really, what are you saying? Do you get to get paid for this?" I said, "Yes, you do." So for that individual, I'm hoping there's a little bit of connection for, for her to see that, okay, I can go through school, I can do CAD, I can do this rapid prototyping, and then maybe that will lead me to a career. So that's my plan with the grant. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I have a quick one.
Sure.
If I may. So the Autodesk CAD program you're utilizing, is that a program that also will interface with the CTEC pathway? Should these students opt to go to CTEC?
Yeah, Autodesk. I've, I've taught Autodesk as a professional. Ford uses it, other places like that. But parts of it, I've taught as low as fifth grade. And so if they get it at fifth grade, then they just build on it in sixth grade all the way through. So yes, absolutely, it could go through the CTEC.
Good question.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
What kind of 3D printer are you going to get?
So we got a, we have a MakerBot. And a MakerBot is very kid-friendly. It's durable. You've got to have that in a middle school. And it's very easy to get the replacement extruder for it. And it's a little more expensive, but it's, it holds up, holds up a lot better.
And for reference for the rest of the board, Autodesk will most likely be used on our building projects. It's that industrial.
Super. Thank you.
And so he was awarded $2,300 for his project. And then the last one, we have Andrea Bacon, and she was awarded $1,250, and she'll explain hers.
Hi, I'm Andrea Bacon. I teach adapted fied in the, at the high school level at Mayo and then a bunch of elementarys. So I saw this grant opportunity, I jumped as fast as I could onto it. As DAP teachers at the high school level, our job is to expose our students to rec and leisure activities that they can do outside of the school setting. So one of those being biking. We currently have four three-wheel adapted bikes that we share within the three high schools. So that's about like 90 students with DAP services using four bikes. So with this money, we're going to be able to implement three more bikes and just to improve this program for them. And to increase their, be able to increase their physical and emotional benefits through the cycling in like a controlled, safe environment. And hopefully, they can, the skills that they use in the DAP setting and that they learn, they can transfer over into their everyday lives and use it as, whether it's just their leisure activity or if it's a means of transportation, getting from places to work or other places. So I just want to share a quick example. Already, we have, or I have one student, at the beginning of the school year, she's nonverbal, severe profound disabilities. She wasn't even able to sit on it, couldn't get her feet on the pedals, and certainly couldn't steer yet. But now she can do all that. Oh, gosh. We're still working on brakes. But, but it's just like so awesome to see like, oh, my gosh, this is the same kid as from in September. She's just pedaling away. So I hope by the end of the school year, once these three additional bikes are implemented, I'll have more success stories like that one. So super grateful. Thank you.
And so again, we know, we hope that, and so all of our grant recipients are supposed to, again, like I said, submit, follow up, and we will put that on our website. And so that is something that, you know, you can always check out and we'll follow that. And I will try to also then remember to highlight future ones. And so I'd like to thank the district for your support, both through the payroll deduction and Boo Fest, our fundraiser, using, being able to use school district facilities. This year, the grants we did use, we were able to use a Goodyear grant for the special abilities project, the music one. The STEM grant was used for the wonderful world of widgets. And the athletic and fine arts grant was used for the adapted bike program. Our next grant cycle is coming up soon, so we will be announcing the dates for that fairly quickly. And for more information about our group, how you can donate or volunteer to help us with Boo Fest or in any way, again, check out our website. And are there any other questions from board members?
What's your website, Jenny? Anything else, board members? Thank you so much. Congratulations, grant winners.
Thank you.
3.04 Above and Beyond.
All right, this is our January Above and Beyond staff that were recognized. And I'll read a couple of examples. First one is Josh Fredericks from Sunset Terrace. Josh helps in any way he can and is always friendly to everyone. He goes out of his way to be sure every classroom has all it needs at the beginning of the school year. Last year, he had bought some books for someone and found out that they already had the books. He brought the books to me to see if I knew a student who might enjoy them. As a reading teacher, I easily found a student who was more than thrilled to have them. He has since, on several occasions, brought me books to give to students who have few, if any, books of their own. He is just an all-around great person. The other one is Jack Feller, I think it's Feller, from Kellogg Middle School. Jack joined the Kellogg staff this year and has been such an incredible addition. On top of being a stellar math teacher, he makes wonderful relationships with kids. I have actually heard kids around the building about how much they like math this year, which is unusual at the middle school level. Jack also does a great job leading our bully prevention committee and creating weekly advisory lessons, helping to create a warmer school climate. We're incredibly lucky to have Jack at Kellogg. So congratulations to all of the January winners, and we are having a drawing.
So another part of our mission is staff recognition and appreciation. And this, we feel, is a wonderful way to do it. I'd like to thank Pasquale's Pizza for helping to provide a gift card. And we actually will have two lucky winners tonight, because we recently voted, we thought, sometimes there are quite a few people who are being recognized. And so if it was more than 14, we will have two. And so we just made that. And... Okay, number five, which I believe is Josh. No, Portia, I can't count. And number 10, which would be Yana, right? So we will be sending cards, gift cards to those. And again, Allison Haas from John Adams was one of our grant recipient winners. So again, thank you on behalf of Rochester Public School Foundation.
Thank you. 3.05 School Board Committee Assignments. Board members, I am going to lead us off this evening. On behalf of the board's Community Education Committee and the full board, I would like to recognize members of the District Racial Equity Advisory Team, also known as REIT. Please come forward. Thank you. This group is a subcommittee of the school board under policy 2.1, 213.0 for two years, though their efforts predate that time. These dedicated individuals have been working to address racism and its impacts on students in our district. And I'd like to introduce Kim Hicks and Carl Eric Dentis. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. On behalf of the Racial Equity Advisory Team, we would like to formally give notice to the Rochester Public School Board that we are disbanding as a task force. This community-led effort was formed in response to the Office of Civil Rights report, which drew attention to persistent equity issues in Rochester public schools. While we believe strongly that the perpetual effects of systemic racism upon our students of color, their families, and our district as a whole is an urgent crisis in need of swift action, we feel that our capacity to sway the system through this task force has diminished such that our work has become ineffective in its mission and purpose. As our final act, we have handed over all records of our work over the last 29 months to the school board and the RPS Coordinator of Equity, Shavanna Talbert, in hopes that it will assist them in our continuing equity work. These records in part include email contacts of task force members, minutes for meetings, disciplinary data analysis, community conversation tools, and staff development survey materials. We want to acknowledge the tireless efforts of REIT members in their work to keep the inequities of our system as a focus of our district, the school board, and its staff. While the effects of systemic racism persist, there has been positive movement stemming from REIT's work, and for that, we are proud. We also acknowledge the support of the school board in allowing this community-driven group to reside as a task force of the board and their continuous presence. We especially want to recognize the invaluable support of Executive Director of Community Education, Amy Icke. We have high hopes and expectations for the district as it moves forward in its equity work. Our students, families, and the Rochester community deserve an education system that is free from bias and racism, and which allows all our students to benefit from the rich educational opportunities in Rochester public schools. Each and every day, our students of color and their families experience racial adversity that hinders their ability to learn and grow as equal members of their classrooms and schools. Every day that goes by is another day we fail them, when we do not adequately address the racial disparities in our schools. Students of color deserve teachers and administrators that look like them, staff that appreciate the complexities of life that affect them as students of color, equitable supports, and equal access to educational and enrichment opportunities that will ensure that they are fully valued as members of our school communities. Rochester Public Schools has the ability and the heart to make this happen. Lastly, in our charge statement, the Racial Equity Advisory Task Force committed to explicitly engage district stakeholders in conversations about racism. In this, we have done. It has been our experience that the word racism has proved time and time again to be a barrier to progress. No one likes to be called racist or to hear that their schools are racist. But if you are not willing to hear that word, then you are not willing to listen to the lived experience of the students and families of color who need your help. The road to equity begins here. We need to say the word because the experience is real. The Racial Equity Task Force may have disbanded, but its members have not given up and will remain an active voice in our community and within the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members? Director Marby?
Thank you, Kim and Carl Eric. Thank you for, for your statement. Thank you for your work and for your commitment and the commitment of others on REIT to never failing to call out racism and discrimination where it exists. We have to continue doing that, and we have to continue working together. And we absolutely understand that your decision to disband in no way diminishes your voice and your leadership in this community. We need you. We need them. We need all of us to continue to work together. And we really appreciate the work that you've done. Thank you. And we know you're not going away. We're counting on you. So, thank you.
Director Barlow, would you like to add anything as a member of the...
Yes, I just wanted to encourage the continuation of Citizen Voice. In fact, it, myself, prior to becoming a member on the board, was keenly aware of the importance and value of stating where you are and speaking for the board. I was able to attend the initial community offerings, which were held initially at John Marshall and Riverside, again, prior to becoming a part of the board. And there's been a consistent theme, and I appreciate the fact that you have echoed that tonight. I do believe that effort is being expended. I further believe and hope that with the development of a coordinator of equity, that the work will, that much of the work that REIT has undertaken will see fruit through that particular office. And we look forward to your continued involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, other committee assignment reports you'd like to offer. Director Slusner?
I have a couple of reports. Yesterday, the design team for the middle schools had a bus tour of three middle schools up in the cities, Cottage Grove, Jordan, and New Prague. It was, again, great to see a good collection of community members, teachers, staff, administration, and architectural crew go on the bus. There's a lot of good discussion, a lot of good examples. And it was a very positive, energetic day. And then last night, the CMA and A&E folks got together with our pool community at Century, kind of kicked that process off. And there's a lot of good discussion there about what the pool community would like to see within that project. And Scott showed it and did a great job leading that discussion from the school side and reminded folks that we do have a budget we have to live within here. So we'll see, we'll see where that goes. But again, it was a very positive meeting with the community folks last night.
Okay, thank you. Other committee reports. Director Marby?
Quick one. As a member of our Community Engagement Committee, I think we, at least I take a fairly broad view of what that involves. And I was able last night to attend a forum on healthcare injustice in our local immigrant community. It was an amazing panel. They called out very clearly that especially our immigrants suffer, really suffer from a lack of access to healthcare. It's far different from what most other people can expect. Two really important points that came up, and there were many of them, but one is that it's very important to... But one is that it's very important to go to where people are to ensure that they know about the resources that exist. And our community schools actually were called out as a good example of providing that kind of access. Shavana Talbert was there and spoke. She wasn't on the panel, but spoke to that a little bit. And schools were often spoken of as maybe one of our best resources in being where people are. The other one was sort of a take on nothing about us without us. And there were a number of people who encouraged those who are dealing with any issues where there is inequity and where there are immigrants in particular or people who don't have the access to not just design programs for them, but to include them, empower them, both in the leadership and in the research. And I think that we're seeing that more and more, that we need all of us to come up with the answers and not just have a group someplace decide this is what you need, but that really inclusive attitude from the very beginning is so important. Thank you.
Any others? I'll offer two announcements, I'll get back to you. Tomorrow is Winter Walk to School Day, walk or bike.
I'm going.
So at some buildings in our district, I know Jefferson is the media site. And so we encourage all our students to get out. I don't know what the weather forecast is, but it is Minnesota. So, you know, bundle up and go.
Low of eleven, high of seventeen.
Seventeen, it's balmy.
Balmy.
And also, just another note, our next meeting is coming up next Monday, and I'll announce this because it's a little off our regular schedule. We are having a study session on Monday, February eleventh, on our bell time study. That meeting is at 5:00 PM at our Facility Services Co-op, which is at thirty-nine thirty-five Highway fourteen east. So a little bit different venue for us, but our boardroom is getting some technical updates, so we will be off our regular site next week. But that is open to the public and also will be streamed, I understand, from superintendent. So please tune in for that. Director Amundson.
I was pointing at Director Workman who had her handle.
Cross traffic, sorry.
Everybody's pointing at me. Okay, so Director Slusner had a very busy day yesterday because he and Director Amundson and I met as the Subcommittee on Reviewing Compensation for the School Board. Jump in anytime you would like to. So a couple of takeaways from this is that we would revisit this annually at our January meeting. There are a lot of other districts who do that. And that's one thing that we would like to see to make, you know, just discuss it, make any changes or not. And another one that I think that Melissa particularly thought was important, should I speak for you?
Please do.
Is to have a listening session for the public on this topic before we take any action. So we would like some guidance from the board as to how you would recommend that we implement that. We were thinking some direct, a direct meeting, and then also able to weigh in electronically.
So I'm not sure, the process at this point, we're prepared to bring forward an actual proposal with numbers, but we think it's important to hear public input before that became a resolution. So we aren't quite sure the next step. If we give a short presentation at a public communication session about what our proposal would be, which of course, we would want to share with you first. I know we're not in a huge hurry on this, so I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to share very briefly what the Subcommittee is recommending or if that should be an official agenda item. But if we have in mind a public listening session, I know that takes a while to get set up, so we thought we'd bring it up now. So.
My question is more around what kind of timeframe were you thinking of for a listening session in terms of?
Well, working backwards, the committee and the discussion at the last meeting was that it would be important to have this nailed down in time for people when they're filing for seats, which the filing period would open in May. So if we're working backwards, you know, a resolution would be helpful to that end by May.
Got it.
So we've got time.
Thank you.
I think it would also be helpful, maybe for Mr. Carlson, to have some idea of the numbers that we might be looking at so he can take that into consideration when working on the budget. It's not huge.
It's not. Our recommendation is not huge.
Okay, great. So how would board members feel about this? How about if the executive committee does have a meeting later this week, so we can certainly discuss this there, but we could also just make a short work plan at the table here that the committee could be in contact with Mr. Carlson about any possible numbers, if they need that, and then work with, we could, the executive could work on with Superintendent and Ms. Edgar about dates, looking at dates. I know we've got a number of things on our ongoing calendar, but if, and then if you had some preferences.
I think it'd be important to get the feedback from the rest of the board before we would go on to the committee, just to make sure that we're in the ballpark. So is that something that you want to deal with now or at a future date?
I am open to either.
I think it would be good to just put it out there now.
Okay.
Because it's not complicated. We shared the data last meeting about benchmarking other districts versus looking at some sort of an inflationary increase. And we decided that a reasonable strategy would be to kind of land in the middle between those two numbers. So the recommendation from the Subcommittee would be to increase to twelve thousand a year, but phased in over two years. So that it would be ninety-six hundred next year. A second recommendation would be many, many districts compensated the chairperson for their extra time. And we really admired that model because it's a lot of responsibility as well as a time commitment. So we were thinking an extra ten percent for the chairperson's compensation. So that would, well, you can do the math, but extra ten percent on each one of those numbers. And like Director Workman shared, the idea of revisiting annually, many districts did that as a practice at the organizational meeting in January. So that would be a recommendation. And then the final one was the listening session before any changes were implemented because we want to be as transparent as possible and be able to maybe share our reasoning at the beginning of the presentation so everyone is well informed if they haven't been watching our meetings.
So can I recap?
Please.
Okay. So you are looking for feedback from your colleagues?
On the amount.
On the?
Recommended amount?
Well, but even before the amount, you said, based on your research, between the percentage and the?
Yep, yep.
So are we comfortable? So one thing would be uncomfortable using the research given, the amount or amounts, the phased approach, and the potential extra, additional for chair, and the community engagement feedback.
Yep, and to revisit it annually as a new procedure.
Okay. Anything else, Director Workman, that you wanted to add to that? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a little bit of explanation of some of our thought processes. We had thought about maybe if there were any changes in compensation. First, we were talking about making those changes in January, but our budget is a fiscal budget, not a calendar budget. So the effect or the, any change would take place as of July first of that year based on a recommendation that we would come up with in January for any change.
Okay.
Just for simplicity's sake, not that the finance department couldn't handle a split year, but.
Okay. And a clarifying question, any, in your recommendation, would this change be taking place to be implemented in the start of our fiscal year in July one, twenty twenty?
Right, the phased-in approach beginning July of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything, Mr. Slusner, for also serving in that committee? Or did they kind of?
No, they covered it well.
They wrapped it up well, okay. Do you mind if I call on you, Director Marvin, to speak to any of those six points that? Oh gosh, you're looking at me. Do you need a recap of the points?
No, I'm wondering if I missed something. So we would need to have this discussion among the board members at an upcoming meeting before you brought anything to the public.
Well, I think it's important to let the public know what we're thinking. And then that would be a, there would still be the ability for us to revise the amount. But if we're not all in agreement of the ballpark of what we're thinking, then it would be really ridiculous to go to the public on it.
So we would, as a board, need to come to some sort of agreement at an upcoming meeting before you had any kind of feedback from the public.
Right. I think what they're looking for now, if I may, is does this sound like a reasonable approach forward? Does this look like the kind of research? Do we feel comfortable with the research that they've done? Are we comfortable with a phased approach? Are we comfortable with, you know, looking at chair stipend, for lack of a better word? Are we comfortable having feedback and then comfortable looking at this annually? So for example, if a board member were to say, I don't think the chair should be compensated any extra. Now, I'm just one board member, I may say that, right? But if all, if six of us were like, well, we don't feel comfortable with that, we feel we want to be equal, then we would be asking them to take that out of the recommendation. Is that sort of what we're looking for?
Because we can go back to the drawing board if anyone is really not comfortable with any part.
I think right now, they're just looking for a high level, yeah, that sounds okay, or really, I don't think this is the way we should move forward or anything like that.
Or we could put together an alternate option and present that to the public and get feedback on Plan A and Plan B as well.
No, and I just, I appreciate the work that you've done. I'm just not ready at this point to say I'm comfortable with anything. I just need a little thinking time.
Absolutely.
Right, but is there anything of those six points that you don't feel comfortable with or particularly like in their approach to come up with some sort of recommendation?
No, I think the approach makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Director Barlow.
I'm comfortable.
You look comfortable. As long as you don't roll over backwards off the, sorry, we did. Okay. I think this is, I think this is a fine approach. I certainly appreciate your thoroughness. We know that this is, can be an awkward topic, but I think that if we move forward thoughtfully, gathering information, working with administration. And I think bottom line is, this does not mean that we are going to all vote in favor of raising our compensation this year. We are just simply looking at it at this point and trying to put it in a system to look at, recommendation to look at it every January, as many, many other boards do. Is that accurately described?
Very well described. And so then a further question would be the public input potential session that we're discussing. I don't know if it should be the whole board or just the members of the Subcommittee who attend that listening session. That would be the board's preference, but.
I am comfortable either way. I'm certainly comfortable with the subgroup taking the show on the road, as it may be. And then we can either discuss that this week in our small group about potential times. I don't know if it's, and if you have potential thoughts about times or places or whatever that you want to send to us, then we could, I can work with Wendy on facilities and that sort of thing.
One thing that a couple of us discussed was the importance of giving people the choice of in-person or electronic so that it reaches as many people and as many circumstances as possible.
Yep, and I think definitely giving time to, you know, we're not going to do this next week because that doesn't give people enough time to know that it's a possibility to come and express. So I appreciate that. Yes?
I have one question, just to think about down the road. If, for instance, we have a proposal that we agree is a board makes sense based on research and whatever, we take this to the community, and the community who shows up for the listening session says overwhelmingly, you shouldn't get a raise. I think maybe we need to have some sort of parameters in terms of what are we looking for in that listening session? You know, is it a vote? Is it a different perspective? Is it, but I think we need to know what specifically we want from that session.
What are your thoughts on that?
We talked a little bit about that. And I think mostly to, you know, maybe there's something that we've missed that we would really value having a different perspective and different input. I would say it's not a vote, since it is a board decision. It's, you know, if the board, if the community really doesn't like what we're doing, you know, they can fire us anytime and some of us in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two. Yeah, so there is always that option. But, you know, we can't control who shows up and who speaks, but we would like to hear as many voices as possible.
Seems reasonable. Anything else on that? Yes, go ahead.
Briefly, I'm a strong proponent of if we're going to call for a listening session, then it's only fair to communicate upfront that we are sincerely in search of hearing their voice versus simply going through the process of hearing their voice, and we're still going to do what we're going to do. So I appreciate your kind of asking us in advance where we actually are on that. Because oddly enough, when I ran for school board, I didn't actually know it was a pay position. So.
So you were pleasantly surprised.
Pleasantly surprised. You know, go down, Wendy said, oh, yeah, you need to fill this paperwork out, and you need to. Thank you, Wendy. If she never mentioned that, then I'd still be sitting, the only one here on the board, not getting.
One other comment I'd like to make is, I think what's really driving this is what Director Amundson said last time we had this discussion, whenever that was, a week ago. And, lost my train of thought for a second. And it was the importance of removing barriers for people. And that's why we would like to get this settled before the end of filing occurs on June?
Second.
Second, is it? That's the last day for filing? So that if people do have extra costs, babysitting or transportation or whatever it might be, that they know that their salary, their compensation would at least cover, hopefully, a big part of that.
Anything else? Okay, everybody clear about how we're moving forward? You know, I like to check in and re-check in and make sure that.
I'm not clear. Did you need additional information from us?
I don't need additional.
I mean, you had said something about emailing you something.
If you have any other thoughts about dates and times for feedback session.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, appreciate that, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay. We are now up to the consent agenda. Is there any item that board members would like removed for separate consideration?
The protocol.
Any other items removed for separate consideration? With removal of four point zero seven protocol document, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Director Amundson, four point zero seven protocol.
It was just a minor point because it was addressed every single time that we talked about it. The part about we'll forward emails to chair and/or superintendent to respond. And I'm just rehashing it, I guess, because I thought we had come to a consensus in our discussions that that would be at the discretion of the board member if it was needed. I mean, a board member who gets an individual email in some kind of a confidence or a direct question about what that individual board member said. So I had thought we had agreed to remove that point. I don't have a problem leaving it in.
Can you tell me which?
Under Chair by Chair Communication with Stakeholders, and it says the second bullet, if an individual receives an email, it will be forwarded to the chair and/or the superintendent to respond. And there was extensive discussion about different scenarios in which it would not be appropriate to email the superintendent and/or chair. And I don't have a problem with the document passing as is as long as we have an understanding and I'm not misunderstanding based on our several previous discussions about those scenarios. I guess I'm asking my fellow board members, did I misunderstand our discussion?
I understood it as you did.
That it would be based on the situation and at discretion of the?
Right, exactly.
Yes?
And as I recall, something to the effect of, "It will be forwarded to the Chair and/or Superintendent to respond with the permission of the sender, or when appropriate, or both."
Something like that. I mean, I... My mental note was that we had just deleted it, but...
I think that's what she's saying, yeah.
Director Marvin, say what you just said again.
Well, leave it as it is, to respond when... With the permission of the sender.
And as appropriate.
And as appropriate. You know, I think we talked about if it's a simple yes/no question, you just answer the question, "Is there a board meeting tonight?" Yeah.
Okay, so the... Can we make a change, or we'll have to make a separate motion?
No.
We can make a change.
Can we approve it as amended?
And then we can approve it now.
Okay.
Because it's on the tables.
I move to approve as amended.
Excuse me, go ahead, Director Barlow.
And can I... And I'm sure you're going to reread it, because I want to make sure that next time we're not...
Yep, you're hearing that, yeah, absolutely. So the...
Second bullet.
Yes, the second bullet would read, "If an individual receives an email, it will be forwarded to the Chair and/or the Superintendent to respond with permission of sender and as appropriate."
I move to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'm going to caution you not to do that, because whose discretion? If you send everything to the Chair or the Superintendent, it's done. Each individual board member may have a different perception on what should be sent and not be sent, so...
I believe...
You just open up the possibility of that.
I believe to... We're sort of tempered by the next section, which is Communication Between Board Members and Stakeholders. So that language is, "Board members will provide stakeholders who have positive or negative comments about school district operations with contact information for the proper staff person or administration according to the chain of communication. Board members should also forward these referrals to the Superintendent." I believe that, to Director Amundson's point, it is more like someone's asking about, "Is there a meeting tonight?" Or, you know, for example, I got a question about, "Is the study session going to be streamed next week?" Things like that. And so I think we're being... We're holding each other accountable to know that no one's going to be... Start speaking for... On behalf of the board, because we know that that's not okay, but we are honoring that we each have some discretion in terms of information that we get. Is that... Yes, Director?
I would just like to make the comment that I thoroughly trust every one of our board members to use good judgment and their discretion as to what they do with emails that they may receive from whoever it is in the public, whether it's addressed to them, if it's addressed to them individually, and how to react to that. And I'm sure that either the Chair or the Vice Chair would certainly be open to providing some advice if there's any question from a board member as to, "Where should this go? What do I do with it?"
Right. It's a little bit redundant and not quite clear, so I think this helps move it a little bit forward. But I think the other bullet point I read sort of puts more meat behind the comments about the district operations that should satisfy what you're fearing. Director Barlow?
And I'm thinking perhaps if you would consider incorporating portions of communications between board and stakeholders into the second bullet point. If an individual receives an email, be it positive or negative, about school district operations, okay, it will be for... Well, information... Contact information for the proper staff person or administrator will be, you know, the chain of command reference versus, you know, just having it in this nebulous area of what type of question, what type of issue, what type of thing, and if it's my judgment, your call, or someone's. I guess it comes down to what it is, and I don't like to spend a lot of time on these nebulous things, in my mind, anyway. But I think it might be useful to either remove it in total, and as you alluded to, assuring us that, "Oh, that issue's addressed under Communications Between Board Members and Stakeholders," which really is what we're talking about. An individual receiving an email from a stakeholder, whoever that might be, the direction is provided as to what should occur.
So you are suggesting removing bullet point two under Chair Vice Chair Communication with Stakeholders to remove confusion about process?
Right, because there's a process direction already provided to board members and stakeholders.
I have a question for our parley, a mentarian here, Ms. Edgar, as to, do we have a motion on the table right now?
We're having discussion.
And we're having discussion, then, before Director Barlow can actually-
Right.
-change that, we have to vote on what's already on the table?
Yes, that is correct.
Up or down, and then you would have the opportunity to present your motion, and then we could vote on that.
Yes.
I'm not making a motion. I'm discussing what might be involved.
Discussing, if you would like to discuss.
Yep, got it.
So the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
The deletion of the previous bullet item would be a problem in that the section that says Communication Between School Board Members and Stakeholders, and we talk about the chain of communication, does not mention forwarding to the Chair. And so then we've lost that piece of our protocol, which is unexpected action for us to keep the Chair in the loop for the Chair to respond. So I don't think deletion will help by itself without then somewhere else referencing forwarding to the Chair.
Which could be simply addressed by adding the language, "Board members shall also forward these referrals to the Chair and the Superintendent."
Could you read what is on the table right now?
Yep. So we have a motion and a second to amend the second bullet point of Chair Vice Chair Communication with Stakeholders to read, "If an individual receives an email, it will be forwarded to the Chair and/or Superintendent to respond with permission of sender and as appropriate."
Question?
Yes.
So we're going to vote on this portion in a minute. If it fails, then what does that mean? The original language remains?
At the moment?
At the moment, yes. Thanks for clarifying. So I will remind my colleagues that we... Our intention was that this was a living document, that we have spent a good amount of time looking it over and changing words and revising words. And I don't necessarily... Well, I don't necessarily have strong feelings about the amendment in and of itself. I am more interested in moving this forward as our living document, that we could revisit in two months, six months, eight months, and say, "How is this working in terms of what we have put forward?" I also would like to agree with Director Workman, you know, we are holding each other accountable, and we are trusting each other that this is not going to become problematic. And if any of our board colleagues, myself included, were found to be stockpiling emails from constituents and answering them in an inappropriate way, then that we would handle that per protocol. But we really just... I feel like we really need to move forward with trust and discretion on what we're doing, which is making good choices and following our set-out rules. Yes, Director?
And I think that's a really good point. And the only issue with this is that the document makes it sound as if board members who are elected officials may not respond. You send me an email, and no matter what, I'm not going to give you an answer. I'm going to move it on. And whether you want me to or not, I'm sending it to the Superintendent in the Chair. And I think we have an obligation to know enough about the workings of the school board, that if somebody calls us and they just want information, we should be able to, right now, just say, "Yep, walk to school day is tomorrow." We got elected.
Yeah, I think the... With the permission of the sender is really important, because I think the public needs to know that if they send an email to a board member, that the board member won't forward it without asking their permission on something. Now, if they say no, then that's maybe a little different situation that would have to be... We'd have to figure out how to deal with. Sometimes it's... The point is, is that the email... The person writing the email might have... Be uncomfortable with certain personal details that they've revealed or whatever else. So I think the permission of the sender and as appropriate is good additional.
And we did, you know, we did really work hard on this in terms of communication, talking about email. We did not necessarily talk about face-to-face communication, which could be similar, right? And so perhaps somewhere down the road, we'd want to broaden that, right? So to me, if you... You know, if you change the language, right, to you have a conversation with somebody versus an email, would we apply the same standard, right? And so that might be a different... To me, it could be similar. If I have a conversation at whatever community event and answer questions, will I take that back to the Superintendent? Yes, if it's a concern, I would definitely do that. If it's an information piece, I probably would not unless I'm getting asked by a lot of people, and then I would say Superintendent. I've been asked, you know, quite a few times about this, and, you know, we need to put this information out there. Anything else on this motion? I would like to... It's been moved and seconded. So we are going to vote on the motion to amend. Thank you. All those in favor of amending the protocol document as written, as described, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So motion pass... The amendment passes. Now, we are going to make a motion to approve the document.
As amended.
As amended? Yes.
Sure. As part of the consent. As part of the consent, so it can go back into the consent agenda. Because she pulled it out.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the protocol document as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Rules of order at work. Oh, yes, Superintendent?
Yes, we have one retirement, Deborah Roelberg, English teacher at Century High School. Retirement effective end of the day, June 8th, 2020. And she's been with the district 27 years. We thank her for her service. And then one other announcement, and it is with deepest sympathy that we announced that Sophia Marie Farr, elementary repair professional at Banbury Valley Elementary School, passed away on January 24th, 2020. Ms. Farr had been with the district for two years.
Seven Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, Acceptance of Bids for the Kitchen Remodel at Sunset Terrace Elementary School. This is a briefing item. Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Scott Sheran, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to...
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to brief you on the acceptance of bids for the kitchen remodel at Sunset Terrace Elementary School. As you all know, the Student Nutrition Services provides food services throughout the district, including Sunset Terrace Elementary. And the current kitchen setup is outdated and need of a remodel and expansion in order to feed the over 800 students that they have at the school. Homestead County Public Health has also initiated or provided us some requirements that we need to increase the length of the dish table in order to accommodate the number that are using that kitchen as well. The current dish machine does not work at all, hasn't worked for several years, and they're currently using disposable trays, which really isn't eco-friendly as well. The plumbing system needs to be updated to comply with code, and they're also planning to knock a wall out, expand the kitchen area in order to provide room to bring the cooler and freezer, which is currently in another location in the school, into the kitchen to make it more convenient for the kitchen staff to use. So what we did is, we hired CRW architects, and this project is supposed to be completed this summer. On December 19th, we put out an advertisement for quotes for this project with a due date of January 28th, and this was going to be a low bid type of process. On January 28th, we received four responses, and the low bid for the project was Benaki Construction in the amount of $465,400. Student Nutrition Services is funding approximately, now this isn't a firm number, but approximately $338,000 of the project, and the remaining costs of about $148,000 for the finishes, the flooring and the ceiling, which can be paid with long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Questions, board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. I would... After I read this, I was thinking, "What are they doing? Do they have like a dish brigade and buckets of water where they're washing trays?" And so it was good to hear that they have an alternative.
Director?
Mr. Sheran, prior to the involvement of the Department of Health, I believe you alluded to...
Yes.
Was this on the long-term facility maintenance radar?
I'm not quite sure. I can check and let you know.
It's not. I was just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Clusner?
I had some question along that line, as it relates to just our long-term projects of how that's going with all of the construction projects kicking off. And have you got your additional employee to help you?
We are interviewing, I believe, Friday for the new position, and hopefully get a hire within the next couple of weeks.
And we'll bring an updated version of the tenure plan on the 18th.
Yes.
Good.
Great.
Mr. Sheran, do you know why some of this comes out of SNS and why some of it comes out of long-term maintenance?
Because it can.
[laughing]
Not a very good answer, but Student Nutrition Services actually has a fund, because they get paid in some sense for some of the food services that they provide. And part of those... That fund we use to do for the kitchen work, for those particular items that are strictly related to kitchen.
So basically, they're paying for the equipment, like the flooring. We can't use that funding source for the flooring.
Correct.
Right. Just another one of those school finance fun facts.
Yes.
Okay. Board members, yes?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this something, since you're going to be doing this project in the summer, would it be helpful to you if we approved it tonight?
Yes, it would.
I would like to move this to action.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on moving this to action? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will read the resolution. It resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the bid from Benaki Construction in the amount of $465,400 for the kitchen remodel project at Sunset Terrace Elementary School.
Move approval, second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheran?
Thank you.
7.02, Monthly Budget to Actual Report. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
Chair Seeland or Superintendent Munoz, School Board members, we told you that as we introduced this new report a couple meetings back, that we would normally put it under consent, but then bring it forward if we have new things to add or unusual things to point out. So the first thing I'm just going to point out, this isn't unusual, but as of November 30th, we had... but as of November 30th, we had received 19.6% of our revenue budget, and we had spent 33.4% of our total overall expenditure budget. We're about 41% to 42% of the year complete as of November 30th. So we're under budget on revenue, under budget on expenditures. That's not unusual for this time of year. I did want to just point out to you a new dashboard that we've been working on for several months, just trying to pick out some of the most important things to more graphically or visually show the board to assist you in knowing where we stand at any given time. So I'm just going to go through these and explain them. And then after this month, they'll just kind of go back into the consent agenda. So the first one, we're just highlighting the general fund. And we're talking about cash and cash equivalent. To us, that means in our checking account and in our money market account at Bremer Bank, how much do we have? And so in the general fund, we kind of have the trend line where it kind of does the same thing every year, where right around February is when we have the low point in our checking account. So you can see that last February, we hit right around $5 million. But we'll have a high point in May and June after property taxes come in. And then the cycle repeats. You spend down your funds. And again, people might wonder, why do you have $30, $35 million in your checking account or money market? But that's really, that telling point is in February. That's in the next 10 to 15 days is when we experience our low point for the year. So we do need some reserves to handle that. In our investment accounts, so we can't go out and buy Tesla stock or anything like that, but we can go and we can buy certificates of deposits. We can buy bonds that are safe and so forth. And so we keep an investment reserve there to earn a little bit more interest than we do in our checking and money market account. If you add those up together, this is kind of showing graphically three years' worth of our investments and our checking account added together. Again, the same cycle kind of repeats that in February now is when we have our low point. And I just want to point out too, that in our general fund, you might wonder, again, why do you have $50 million between your checking, your money market, and your investments? If you divide that over our budget of about $250 million, that would get us about one payroll, maybe two payrolls into the future if something unforeseen were to happen, like the state shutting down. So we do need that reserve to be able to make sure that we can meet our obligations if something like 2011 happened, when the state shut down for almost a month there. I just want to point out our debt services. We've just been tracking, I was going to try to knock this down one. So this just kind of shows a running three-year total. Now, this report isn't really going to change month to month, but it just kind of shows you visually, this is each debt series. So a debt series might be a building construction or a building remodel. And it sums up what we had in debt at the end of each year. These are in millions of dollars. So at the end of 2017 school year, we had $111 million in debt. Then the next year, 104, then 123. We've just made our debt payments last week. So by the way, Century High School is paid off. Riverside Elementary is paid off now this week. And then we did receive the money for the bonds for the new construction last Thursday. And so we now have $283.74 million in debt.
And we're all rejoicing like...
I've actually been saying, we've got the money now in the bank. Our biggest problem has been spending it. So we've got to get moving on, buying land and moving forward with construction. Just wanted to highlight some of the student numbers. Again, these are year-over-year numbers, so these wouldn't change really on a month-to-month basis. But we do project upward growth. And on a monthly basis, each year has been just incrementally higher than the other year. There's, we have not dipped below the previous year over the last four years. So we just kind of keep growing a little bit. You can just see it ebbs and flows a little bit. There are students that move out in the middle of the school year. There are students that move in in the middle of the school year to replace those. So some months were up, some months were down. But we stay generally within the same ballpark of where we start each school year. And then I wanted to point out full-time equivalents. So I think back when we did budget revisions, I was talking about how many empty or vacant positions we had. I think at that point, I said in October, we had 69 vacant positions. We narrowed that gap down to about 50, and then it went back up to 54 and then to 67. And Carl and I were talking about this yesterday. This is what we're trying to deal with, not having the people that we want to have right now. This is normal, and I use that in quotes. It's normal in the industry to have about 2% vacancy. And that's basically right where we're at. So our HR department's working hard to continuously try to get the people hired and get all those positions filled. They're budgeted, so they're approved. We just need to find the qualified people and get them hired. And if you just compare that to last year, the lowest we got were about 49 vacancies, but we were at a high of 111 near the start of the school year. So our HR department works hard on that, but we thought this was just kind of a good visual to see where we are with the number of people in our system.
If I may, Mr. Carlson? Do our paraprofessionals account for that number? Are these licensed teachers?
It's everything. So it can be custodians, secretaries, everything.
I have a question, a big overview on this. Is it that we are not getting enough people to apply for jobs? And I real, and I understand, and I understand that, you know, it might be different for this area, this area, and this area. Or are we getting applicants, a lot of applicants, who could fill the job number-wise, but that they're, they don't meet our qualifications?
I'm going to turn that over to Carl Bach and our Executive Director of Human Resources.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask this question earlier.
I was not expecting to talk tonight. I think this, if you look at your consent agenda, you see we have a constant turnover of people. So we have, I would say, I deleted, I delete a lot of emails, but I was just looking back today and thinking, I probably saw four resignations and five hires today alone. So it's people moving in, moving out, taking different jobs, moving out of the community. So it's just a plethora of reasons why we have a constant turnover of staff. Very few of these would be teaching positions. We're sitting in a really good position right now as far as teachers go. But I would say, when we're talking about advertising, paraprofessionals, SNS, maintenance tend to be the jobs that we have the most openings in. And that's pretty much a constant in the job market right now is when people are leaving jobs and moving to different jobs at a record rate that hasn't been seen in decades. So it's just, but we do our best to fill them as soon as we can.
And we're a great employer.
Yes, we are. Any other questions for me?
Go ahead.
Just one more comment. I'm not at all questioning your, how you're handling this at all. It was just, you know, since you mentioned that some, you have maybe some applicants who don't meet the qualifications, I was just wondering how many people you actually turn away from jobs.
Oh, that's really, I mean, I think it depends on...
And once again, it's varied, I mean, it's our different employee, our different units...
Different units.
That you might see more or less in that, but...
Yeah, as someone, I'm typically not involved in interview teams and looking at applicants. So I honestly, I don't think I can answer that question right off the top of my head.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Director Slusner?
You had mentioned a dashboard for this.
Yes.
It'd be good to get a tour of that at some point? And it'd be really interesting to see if we calculate our year-to-year cost increases. So when we have legislative folks who feel that 2% is enough, we can show them that, hey, we're tracking it three and a half.
We can do some analysis on that, I'm sure.
Other questions? Appreciate the visuals.
Yes.
You know, I like the visuals.
We're going to keep, again, trying to refine this. We'll add other things as we go. And maybe I'll point out different things from time to time. We, again, are still working on another one that will help try to project where, you know, at the end of January, for example, where we might finish at the end of June. I think that just helps us, as we're setting the next year budget, to have a better idea how we might end this year, so we can use that in context.
I just wanted to say, it's really helpful for me to see those comparisons, you know, among several years. And I really appreciate all the work that you and your team do putting this together for us so that we can understand at least on a basic level, everything that's involved.
But thank you.
It's complicated.
Yes, it is complicated.
Board members, this is a briefing item. Someone would like to make a motion?
So move to action.
Been moved and seconded, moves to action. All those in favor of moving it to action, please say aye. Any opposed? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 is hereby approve the budget to actual report as presented for the month of November 2019.
Move approval, second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:21.
Thank you.
We didn't get to sing "Happy Birthday."
I didn't put it on the notes. Nobody told me.
Deborah, she's 39.
39.